Mr. Wasworth, would you do the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Wasworth, available?
Yeah, he's muted. If you can unmute Mr. Wasworth.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Wasworth.
Start again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Treasurer, Deputy Clerk, to our City Attorney, audience. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2020. This meeting is being held in pursuit to Public Act 228, Sections 3A and 2, which allows a meeting of a public body to be conducted electronically in a manner that permits two-way communication, so that members of the public body can hear and be heard by other members of the public body, and so that public participants can hear members of the public body and be heard by the members of the public body and other participants during a public comment period. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom Meeting App. Tonight's meeting ID number is 832-2683-6698. To join this meeting by phone, dial 646-558-8656. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so, again, by phone or online utilizing the Zoom Meeting App. The raise hand method will be used to acknowledge those wishing to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda. If you've dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand from your phone, or you can click the raise hand icon. We ask that everyone please keep your phones muted, with the exception of our City Council and elected officials. And at the time, Mr. Chair, roll call was taken at our special meeting, and we do have a quorum for tonight's council meeting.
Thank you.
And at this time, we will read the agenda. Number one agenda, number two minutes, three petitioner, four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerk's report, seven treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven communication, and number twelve is adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdal, to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda, number two minutes, 2A, for approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 23rd, 2020.
So move for approval of the minutes held on regular meeting, November 23rd, 2020.
I'm sorry, Ellen, do we have corrected minutes from that meeting?
Yes, yes, everything's corrected.
Okay, so, okay, okay, that's we're approving the corrected ones?
Yes.
Support. I just need to make sure.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Abdal, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held on November 23rd, 2020. Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Wasworth?
Stand.
Chair votes yes, and motion is approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval are the minutes from the special meeting study session that was held on November 23rd, 2020 at 7:00, and this is to discuss, it was, the discussion was the amendment to Section 8-20 of the City Code of Ordinance. Motion would be in order to approve the special meeting minutes.
So move to approve the special meeting minutes.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdal, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of minutes from a special meeting. Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Stand.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda this evening. Takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At 7:00 PM, we had a closed session to discuss union negotiations. Madam Clerk, at this time, your chair going to recognize Councilwoman Roscoe.
You, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to concur with the administration and the Human Resource Director's recommendation to approve the letter of agreement with Teamsters Local 214 for the protection of the active employees who are currently covered by Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Healthcare Benefits, if the employee were to revert to a non-paid status resolving from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdal, I mean, I'm sorry. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, and just to concur with the administration and the Human Resources Director's recommendation to approve the letter of agreement with Teamsters Local 20, I mean, 214 for the protection of the active employees who are currently covered by the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Healthcare Benefits, if the employer were to revert to a non-paid status resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
She just read that saying that it was only for if the employee went to a non-paid status. Is that the only reason?
Yes or no, Ms. Williams?
No, I'm asking a question, so don't tell, don't, don't, don't cut me off by saying yes or no. I'm asking a question, because that's not what was in the document. So is that, is that the way it's gonna read? Because that's not what was in the agreement. You can't keep changing it up.
Anybody want to answer that question?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the bottom, the bottom line here is we are protecting our employees' healthcare. That's the bottom line of this resolution.
I understand that we're protecting our employees' healthcare, and I agree to that point. But as I said, I don't agree that it's not totally clear. Neither individual could answer the question whether the member was aware that this was even taking place, so no, I, I can't support it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved. Uh, the Chair now is going to recognize Councilwoman Abdal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I just would like to make an announcement and congratulate Tanya Colfield and the Romulus Parks and Recreation Department. They are a recipient of a, of an award handed down from the Michigan Parks and Recreation Department. For, the award was for innovative programming with their disco daddy-daughter celebration. With the advent of COVID, Tanya rethought the dance and knew how valuable it was to the people of Romulus. And the dance was held outside this year, socially distanced, and the committee at the state felt this was a great idea, and she is receiving the Innovators Award for 2021.
Oh, sweet. Congratulations. Sweet.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Abdal.
Love it.
All right. Uh, next, uh, the Chair going to recognize Councilman Wasworth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is on a personal note. Back on the week of November the 5th and the 6th, my wife, with, with seven other members of our family, were all diagnosed with COVID-19. And I just want to say, folks out there that think that this is some type of a joke or of political football, believe me, it's not. It's real, and when you get it, it hurts. And it took my wife and I four weeks to come out of this. And all I'm saying for people out there that think this is some joke, it's not a joke, and wear your, believe me, wear your mask and try to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth. Very good point. Uh, the Chair would like to wish my, my daughter Gina Barton a happy birthday today. Uh, today is her birthday, and I just want to say happy birthday, daughter. That's going to conclude the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Uh, number five is the mayor's report, but I do want to make note that Mayor Burcroft and to, uh, Mr. Barton and Council, uh, that we do have two written requests to speak on agenda item, uh, number 5E before Council takes action. So when we get there, we'll, we'll allow those individuals to speak. Thank you. Mayor Burcroft, thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Treasurer, and viewing audience. One, just as a history note, I wanted to mention that today's the 79th anniversary of Pearl Harbor, uh, which not just was, um, a loss of, uh, over 2,400 people, but it included kind of the entry of our country into the Second World War. So we want to remember all those who were impacted and continue to pray for those who were involved in not just that event, but in World War II. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention, um, because of this COVID and, and the order that's out there, we were not, not able to do these public events. So we did a video tree lighting, uh, that was videoed last week, and it did run, uh, and was aired, thank you, Mike, Friday on the 4th, which would normally be our time that we would do that. Um, we did make sure that the, um, the website is updated with the photos from the last year's event with all the electeds and all the people, but obviously, we weren't able to do that. But I did want to assure, uh, our, our youth and our kids that Santa did get the key and, and the tree was officially lit, and that is running on video only right now. Uh, today, there was an extended 12-day order, uh, so it looks like we're still going to be in this, um, for a while till we get an update from, from Lansing on that. Um, also, uh, I wanted to, uh, allow, if we could, Mr. Chairman, to have Chief Fonness, uh, join us on the call, uh, and just talk a little bit about, uh, some things that have been going on in the community. He can't talk specifically about cases, but, um, I've had, you know, some questions and, and things from the public, so I thought it'd be good to just have a few minutes from him before I get into the action items on your report, please.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Mayor.
Chief Fonness, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a brief statement. Uh, good evening, Council and residents. So as, as many of you know, and certainly the mayor and the council know, uh, we had a fatal shooting of a 28-year-old man uh, in the 15,700 block of Taft, six days ago. And while I can't, I can't comment on the specifics of an open investigation because I don't want to jeopardize it, and we certainly owe that to the family, I'll say that the investigation is in full force and it's progressing. And so at the police department, we know that it's understandable that some residents and especially people in that neighborhood are concerned. And let's face it, there's nothing worse than not feeling sick in your own home. Uh, we do not believe that this homicide was a random attack, but we're asking residents just to be aware of their surroundings, and if they see something suspicious, to please call it in. Uh, we are conducting extra patrols all in that area, and we ask that you just continue to look out for your neighbors. In fact, in this crime, it was a neighbor who helped us to quickly locate the appropriate house. So we'll update, uh, you and the public on any developments in this incident when we're able. And I just wanted to suggest, if you're already on Facebook, uh, would you check out the Romulus Police Department Facebook page? It's, it's a great way for us to stay in touch with you and you, you to stay in touch with us. And we'll post updates on it, and it has all the, uh, our non-emergency contact information, and the detective who's in charge of that case, her information. So I just, I just wanted to, uh, put that out there, uh, for the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, now, I do have some action items, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first of which is a recommendation from Kevin Lozen, our HR Director, and Greg Schultz, our Labor Attorney. This request is to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and Human Resource Director to sign the Michigan Employee Retirement System Agreement Addendums uh, that are due on or before December 15th of this year.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we, um, that, that we, um, concur the Michigan Employment Retirement Assistant Agreement.
Support.
It's been motioned by, uh, Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for the Michigan Employees Retirement System Agreement. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Muted. Muted. Yep, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, and the Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our DPW Director and Legal Counsel. Uh, this one is to concur to the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached pass-through agreement with Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. This is accepting an awarded, uh, $40,000 grant, which includes a federal share, uh, $32,740, and a local share to the City of Romulus of $7,260. That's for the creation of a pathway system master plan. Uh, this plan will be included in corridor studies for future sidewalks and connections, uh, to the Turtle Cove Walkway Park, uh, as well as the Metro Park system. The funds are verified, uh, and available to the account that's listed.
Here's the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into the non-motorized pathway grant agreement. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for the non-motorized pathway grant agreement. Any discussion?
John?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wasworth?
If I could, to the mayor, to Roberto, is, um, this going to give us some new pathways in our city? Or are we just maintaining what we have?
Um, good evening, Council. No, this is a master plan to put together a, a global pathway system through the entire city. So it's not to maintain what we have, it's to propose where we're missing sidewalk and, uh, you know, additional pathways. So it's not just a, a single path. It's, we're talking, you know, it's going to include, uh, Wayne Road, you know, and, and Merriman and, and Eureka. It's, it's all of our corridors. It's just a master study.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, this one is to concur with the administration and consent to the piggyback on the Omni Partners Public Sector Contract that's listed, uh, with, uh, Weatherproofing Technologies Inc. This is to perform necessary repairs to the roof for our City Hall building. The amount's $50,485. Funds have been verified and available out of that general fund building and grounds capital outlay account that's listed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the Omni, Omni Partners Public Sector Contract, number R180903 with Weatherproofing Technologies Inc., to perform necessary repairs to the roof at Romulus City Hall totaling $50,485.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, motion to piggyback on Omni Partners Public Sector Contract with Weatherproofing Technology Incorporated. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next request is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and also Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. This one is to concur with the administration and award ITB bid 20/21-07 to the most responsible bidder, Ritter GIS Inc. That's for a five-year contract for professional services for maintenance enhancement and continued development of our geographical information system for the City of Romulus and existing City Works database. Costs for this will be budgeted for each fiscal year and will not exceed the budget. And it's out of that listed account that's above from finance.
Chair, I'll take that motion.
Oh, okay.
For the ITB 20/21-07, for the five-year contractual services contract with GIS for city work.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for the ITB 20/21-07, five-year contractual service contract, GIS, city workers. Any discussion? No discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would just like to make note, in the letter from Roberto to Gary, it clearly states that the bid advertisement clearly states that the vendor shall have a staff member present at the DPW. So is that why we went with, uh, is that why the recommendations is for, uh, of the Ritter company versus the other company that was lower?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, the other company that bid was out of state, and we have a lot of need for our DPW staff to see and interface with somebody in person, not, you know, uh, three states away.
What, but does the ordinance call for someone to be on staff? Is this a part of the ordinance, or is this just a decision that?
It was part of the bid. It was in, it was in the bid spec.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear of that, because I noticed that the other company was a little bit less. Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdal?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, next up, he is our ITB 20/21-10 official publication for the newspaper. And what I want to do is have, uh, Attorney Steve Hitchcock do the intro. And as the clerk said, I believe we have, uh, a couple of requests for this agenda item to speak. Steve?
Uh, yes, I'm going to let the citizen speak first.
I thought you were going to introduce it and then have them get their...
Okay, I can do that. A- as you know, the Charter has a provision in it that requires annually that the council select a newspaper, uh, for the city's publications. And it all, it provides that that newspaper is supposed to be one that has within this, is operating within the city and also is in general circulation within the city. There were bid specs sent out. There was two bidders. Uh, in my letter, I said Telegraph, but it should be Telegram, was one of the bidders, as well as Associated News. Um, the, one of the issues that I point out in my letter to you, which I hope you all have, is the question of what constitutes being in circulation within the city because of the COVID-19 problem. One of the newspapers, uh, while it has a newspaper online, it is currently not doing any distribution, to our knowledge, within the city to citizens of that online newspaper. Uh, and as I point out in the letter, the criteria, uh, in the Charter calls for, what does the statute permit? And the state statute says that they have to be in circulation, but if there's some pandemic that has prevented that, then, uh, that's excused for up to two years time period, but by the end of two years, they would have to be back circulating again. And circulation is different than just printing something. You have to be publishing it into the community, circulating it into the community. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And this, while the state statute specifically calls out an exception to that for the pandemic situation, the Charter doesn't have any act of God provision in it. But I believe if you wanted to, you could read into this provision, an act of God exception that would be consistent with the statute. So if you wanted to choose Associated Press, uh, you could do so based on a determination that you felt that the act of God was an exception to the Charter provision. Uh, and of course, the, the other newspaper, Telegram, is my understanding, uh, does still distribute their newspaper within the city to some extent, and a copy is delivered to City Hall each week when they print. So, um, your obligation is to decide on the bidders. It's my understanding from, from the purchasing department that the pricing is pretty much the same when you take into consideration the difference in the size of the papers and therefore the amount of print space that would be taken up. So, uh, you, if you want to consider an act of God as being an exception in this case, then both of them would be eligible. If you don't want to consider act of God exception, then I would indicate to you that the one newspaper is not currently circulating. Um, and I would also, as I said in the end of the letter, I would recommend that whoever you awarded to, you make part of your resolution that if they are going to do electronic publication, that they would have to have some methodology by which the citizens could sign up to receive that newspaper electronically. In other words, they could go to the site, provide their email address, and then the newspaper would automatically send that to them to create a circulation to them of that paper. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, quick question for the Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Tally.
Who, who is our current paper right now?
Associated.
Associated, right. And what are they doing right now? What have they been doing right now during the pandemic? Because they've been our paper anyway. What have they been doing?
They have, they, they, uh, as I understand, and if somebody's on the line, I think, to maybe explain it to you, but my understanding, they have an electronic site, and that's the only thing they're doing. We did continue to use them during the, during the emergency period also on the theory that that could be waived during the mayor's authority for, uh, the emergency that was declared. But now that we don't have that at the moment, I think we got to go back to the... But now that we don't have that at the moment, I think we gotta go back to the rules of what does the Charter say? And that's why I say, uh, while the state statute points out the act of God as an exception to that, the Charter doesn't specifically say that, but the fact that it adopts the state statute, you could infer that it also was adopting the exception for acts of God.
So, and maybe it can ask one, so, um, during the midst of this pandemic, the Associated Press, what it is our current paper now, um, our citizens are able to access their publication via digital matters, you're saying, right now?
I believe if they go to their website, they can access it, yes, but they don't, they don't have any method where you can sign up to automatically get it sent to your email each time they publish.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Yes.
John?
Uh, yes.
Yes, uh, Steve, you may have mentioned that, um, whichever the council decide, then they would, you prefer, you recommend that they would electronically send everyone that signed up the, uh, paper?
Yes, that they ought to have a method where the citizen could sign up to receive the paper electronically.
Is that, was that in the bid?
Um, no, but the bid proposed that they would have to be in circulation. So if they're choosing to only circulate by having electronics and no, no print material that they can distribute, then this would be the best way of distributing it to have, citizen have a right to sign up to have it sent to them.
And, and you made a statement, something pertaining to an act of God. So are you, because, are you trying to say that this virus, this situation with the virus is act of God?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I don't know, uh, before the discussion, uh, continues on, we do have two, um, residents, or I'm sorry, two that have requested to speak on this matter. So before any other action is taken or further discussion, uh, I think it's appropriate to allow these individuals, uh, to speak.
Yes.
Um, so the first written request, if I, um, Mr. Chair, um, is coming from David Willett. He is the president, um, of the Associated Newspaper and publisher of the Romulus Roman. Please keep in mind, um, those that are speaking, um, on this matter, that you will have three minutes to speak. Um, and any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Uh, when you reach one minute, I will alert you that you have one, one minute left, um, in your time. So at this time, uh, Mr. Willett, um, mute yourself and you may speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity. We are all in a pandemic together. And, um, my, the newspapers that I operate, uh, have been serving uh, the Romulus area for a hundred and thirty-one years. And, uh, my father passed away in nineteen seventy-five on this very date. But, uh, between us, well over half of the years of publication have been, uh, involving my family. Romulus is a community that I care about. I'm proud to be the official newspaper. And I thought very carefully about the options when we were, uh, confronted with this pandemic. Uh, I considered, uh, I, I got legal opinions. I considered the health and well-being of my staff. Uh, I consulted with the staff of the printing company and, uh, decided to do the best thing in the best interest of all of us. We have not started publishing online. Uh, we have been publishing for some time, and those of you that, uh, don't frequent, uh, our online edition, if you go to associatednewspapers.net, it looks exactly the way the printed, uh, paper looks. Uh, you can electronically turn the pages. And I've made it clear to every person in the city administration of Romulus that I'm, uh, perfectly able and happy to send, uh, an electronic, uh, version of
One minute.
that, uh, to any citizen that requests it. So I'm fully prepared to do what, uh, the, uh, attorney for the city has suggested. I do, in fact, consider this an act of God. It's our intention to go back to printing and distributing that way, but I feel that, uh, we've never missed a week, including the weeks of the pandemic. We continue to provide, uh, news and information, uh, about the, uh, affairs of the city. Uh, we're, we archive copies, uh, which, uh, few people do. And, uh, we've been, also been the publisher of the Plymouth Pumpkin Festival. But, uh, we've all been hurt economically. Uh, I've, I'm trying to do the right thing here. And, uh, uh, we'll continue to do that. In addition to
Your time is up, three minutes. It would be upon consent of the chairperson.
Uh, I would allow, uh, Mr. Davis to speak of another minute or so.
All right, I'll wrap it up. Uh, in addition to publishing faithfully, just, uh, publishing the, um, business of this, of the city of Romulus uh, in print and online, uh, and for the moment, only online, uh, we, uh, all of the other matters that are required, affidavits and so on, billing and, and, uh, things, we also provide all of the services, and I think you'll find almost everyone in the city administration and staff, uh, pleased with the kind of service we get. In addition, we were asked to publish for free additional, uh, ads for other community events in Romulus, and we have done that voluntarily. I can answer any questions. I'd be happy to do it.
Any questions?
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Abdo?
If a person wishes to subscribe online, will you have that clearly on your website?
Absolutely.
So that it will be easy for, when they open the page, they'll be able to see that right away?
Yes, uh, the clerk and I had a discussion that what we might want to do is, uh, put that on the city's website. That alls they have to do is, uh, send us, uh, uh, a, an email, and we will, uh, send them a copy for free until, uh, till such time we go back into print.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no more questions from counsel, Mr. Chair, we have another, uh, written request to speak. And, um, this is from Gina Wilson Stewart. She's the CEO and publisher of the Telegram. Um, Ms. Stewart?
Evening, everyone. Good to see you guys. Um, as you guys know, I am Gina Wilson Stewart, and I'm the publisher and CEO of the Telegram Newspaper. And I've held that role since two thousand and six. And I'm proud to say that since that time, we have never missed a week of publication. And if I have to say so myself, you know, it's not always easy, but, um, we get it done. It's hard trying to publish a paper every week, but our loyal members and readers of the community, they expect to be able to pick up their paper every week from one of the local businesses or wait to get theirs delivered to their home, uh, once the delivery person comes out. We also, uh, understand that some people like to read their paper online. They like to read it on their phone, their tablet, or their computer, and we accommodate that as well. Since two thousand and eight, we've had a website, and the paper has been published on the website at, since that time. So you can go to the website telegramnews.net and read the complete paper. And also, if you have a subscription, delivery subscription, you automatically get a website online subscription. So since two years ago, you have been able to do both. So however, the Romulus bid for two thousand twenty-one called for uh, the bids and pricing for a newspaper. And the newspaper in general circulation, they asked for pricing as well as information. And that, we met those requirements of that bid. Also, the twenty twenty-one official newspaper bid for the city of Romulus asked for information as it relates to distribution of the weekly newspaper within the city of Romulus, and we had to verify that we did that, and we did. We met those requirements as well.
One minute.
Okay, lastly, when other newspapers are closing their doors or dis- discontinuing their printing of their weekly edition, I thank God that we are continuing to grow. We have, have been able to meet the needs of the people in the city of Romulus, the city of many downriver communities, as well as residents in the city of Detroit. This year, we're celebrating our seventy-sixth anniversary of printing the Telegram newspaper. And we are prepared to become the official newspaper of the city of Romulus again. We were the official newspaper a couple of years back, and, uh, we appreciated it at that time, and we are able to meet the requirements that was in the bid from twenty, for twenty twenty-one. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So just so you know, we haven't missed a beat, and we're still growing.
Those were the only two written requests, uh, Mr. Chair.
All right. Yes. Is that Ms. Abdo?
It is.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Abdo.
I have a question about the electronic version. Uh, so it's my understanding that they only get the electronic version if they're a paid subscriber?
No, you can view the Telegram online at telegramnews.net.
Yeah, I've been online all day reading both papers.
Oh, okay.
But what I wanted to know is, would you be able to meet this requirement if a person, um, can you send it out electroni- electronically to someone if they request it?
Sure, we do that, we do that anyway. We send it out to some people, and we put the link on there, and you can actually go to the website and read it.
But they have to be, do they have to be a paid subscriber, already paid subscriber?
Nope, you get a, a trial subscription from day one when you sign up. It's a three-month trial subscription. And then if you want to get a subscription, you can after your three-month time period.
Okay, and, okay, what is the cost per month to get a subscription?
It is twenty dollars for six months and thirty dollars for the year. The paper costs fifty cents on the newsstands.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wadsworth?
Uh, if I could, unless somebody else wants to speak, uh,
Yes, I do.
Uh, Ms. Williams, you want to speak first? Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I wanted to ask, I know, um, I'm not sure if it was our city attorney that made a, uh, the comment that the clerk offered the Associate News, uh, to be able to post the, the paper on the city website. Was that correct? The city attorney?
Yeah, Ellen and I discussed that. Ellen Bragg.
Okay, that was you?
Yeah.
So was that offered to both newspapers or just one?
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Um, this was a discussion prior to the, the bid part. This was just improving, um, what we currently have in place, because we are currently using Associated News. So it was just saying, just so we can get that out to make sure that it is available on the city website. I thought it was available already on the city website, and it's not. You know, just a link where people can get to it. So this was something not as part of the bid. This was just to improve services, my discussion with Mr. Willett concerning, concerning that.
Right, but what I'm asking is, was that offer to both newspapers or just to, uh, the Associate News?
Well, wasn't, it wasn't in the bid, I mean, if, if that's what you're asking, so I haven't had.
I'm not asking was it in the bid, I'm asking was that offered to both newspapers?
No, because we, I haven't had a conversation with anyone from the Telegram. This is a conversation with Mr. Willett and myself, with him being our current official newspaper, so that, so that we can make sure that we are improving services, you know, to our residents. That's all that that, that, that conversation's about.
Okay, well, thank you. And I just wanted to say this, and everybody has their own opinion. But for our city to, our city attorney to say it was an act of God, that was a man-made disaster. It was not an act of God. You know, we have to lean and pray to God to fix this thing that man did. Okay, so that's my opinion, based on you saying it's a man-made, uh, uh, it was God, uh, made. The other hand, I just brought to the, the, uh, attention of everyone about the Ritter contract we just voted on. Now, the bid said, and Roberto made mention, that the, the bid called for whoever got the bid to be local, you know, to be local, to be able to have, uh, you know, good contact with them. The other company didn't win the bid because they was out of state. So how can, if this, uh, Associate News, and nothing personally against them, I don't even know them. But if, if they don't have access to deliver the paper in which the bid asks for that, how are you gonna take it and turn it around because of this pandemic? The pandemic has nothing to do with it. You got the Detroit News, you got every other paper still on the stand. And I, I, someone mentioned that about, uh, the Telegram News. It's at the police department, it was at Direct Center, Senior Building, the City Hall, every actually city-owned building plus on newsstands. And it's been around for a long time, and it has nothing to do with the owner of this newspaper. But if we're gonna be fair, let's be fair. You don't come up and, 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 and bring to, to, to the council, at least not to me, uh, you're fabricated on why we dip, dealing with this, this virus that is God-made just because you want something to happen. The city attorney, I don't agree with a lot of things you say. Uh, I, I, I think it's wrong. If the bid was cut out there for a certain, uh, and, you know, for certain requirements, then that's what we need to follow. Not stretch it and bend it and flip it. And that's my opinion.
All right, Mr. Wadsworth?
Um, if I can, and nobody else cares to speak.
I was, I was, I was trying to say something.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Ms. Webb.
Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
My comment is this. First of all, I just don't understand why David or Gina is even here. If we never have bidders come and, um, give us their scoop on what they can do for the city. This is, this is just a little bit on the ridiculous side. The, uh, Telegram does have, um, only four dollars and fifty cent per inch. It is a, it's a huge circulator. I mean, you see it everywhere. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm really offended by even some of the questions that have been asked. Um, this is a bid. So we go with the lowest bidder, correct? And the one per Charter that is circulating and doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I have to agree, this is not an act of God, and that is not to be put into either motion. Back to you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Hey, um, I'm gonna move that, um, um, that we select the Associated Newspaper for the, for the official paper, and the price will be four dollars and seventy-five cents, and I do this based on your past performance. And also, I believe that it, the words act of God exception should be in this bid. And, um, this paper has, um, served this town well for, um, in excess of one hundred years. And every Wednesday or Thursday when it comes out, uh, you always can find something about Romulus in it. If it's not one or two articles, and it's part of the Western Wayne County that we're, uh, with. Thank you.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Tally, uh, to award official publication newspaper for twenty twenty-one. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I have one more thing to say through the chair.
Okay.
I've not picked up an Associated paper. I worked in the clerk's office all those years, and I am familiar with that circulation. We, anything. We, anything. Romulus is never on their front page. I mean, I've I've not seen anything on the front page. The Telegram publishes all the different, uh, cities. And and for somebody to sit and say just how great something is, it is not great. We don't, our citizens don't have access to it. We have access to the Telegram. And, you know, I just want that out there. I mean, to me, this has been really, um, a circus. When you sit and you're going to question and you're going to play tit for tat with, uh, two publishers, they are bidders. They aren't even supposed to be before us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
No.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, we have a couple more items to, uh, for action tonight. Uh, both, uh, budget amendments. Uh, the first is item F that's before you. Uh, this is a request to concur with the administration and introduce Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash eleven. That's to recognize that grant contribution for the SEMCOG, uh, and reduce the general fund balance of seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars as our portion for that grant.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally.
Motion to concur with the administration and introduce Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash eleven to recognize grant contribution from from SEMCOG and reduce the general fund balance of seventy-two hundred sixty dollars.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo. And this is to concur with the administration and introduce Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash eleven to recognize grant contribution from SEMCOG and reducing capital fund balance of seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. End discussion. Here no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Was, Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next one's also a budget amendment. Uh, this is a request to concur with the administration and do introduction of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twelve. Uh, this is to recognize the grant revenue and expenditures for the grant awarded on September twenty-third, twenty twenty for the CTCL Safe and Secure Elections. Uh, this was a great grant. Uh, our clerk worked out over sixteen thousand dollars that helped, uh, with the cost to make a better election process.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve, uh, the introduction of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twelve.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo for introduction of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twelve. End discussion. No discussion. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number six is the Clerk's Report. Number six A for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash ten. And this is for the Water and Sewer Fund. Um, this budget amendment was introduced at the regular council meeting of November twenty-third, twenty twenty.
The Chair will make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe.
For second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty dash twenty-one dash ten, Water and Sewer Fund introduced at the November twenty-third, twenty twenty, regular city council meeting. Good point.
In motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally. Second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash ten for the Water and Sewer Fund introduced at eleven twenty-three, twenty, regular city council meeting. End discussion. No discussion. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
Six B, these are approval of appointments to the Board of Review, alternate members. Um, the Executive Advisory Committee met on December third, twenty twenty, to discuss the recommendation from Julie Albert, Director of Assessing and Financial Services, to appoint Gary Harris and Jill Lambert to serve as alternate members to the Romulus Board of Review with terms beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, there is a memo that was, uh, included in your packet from Ms. Albert. Um, and therefore, we're asking Council to concur, uh, with the recommendation of the Executive Advisory Committee, um, again, to appoint Gary Harris and Jill Lambert to serve as the alternate members, um, to the Romulus Board of Review, uh, with their terms, uh, beginning January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, through the chair, if I may, before I vote.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
The MCL two eleven, twenty-eight, three says, a township board. We're not a township, we are a city. I don't have a problem with it, but that language should be changed.
Well, we can't change, uh, state statutes like that.
We are not a township.
Okay, I, I mean, I can't change, uh, state legislation.
Saying, uh, I don't even know why it was placed in here. You could have just appointed them, you know. But, yeah, that's not a, we're not a township.
Well, right, Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Webb, I know, um, Ms. Albert, I believe, is on this, um, uh, has joined this meeting. Perhaps she could shed some extra light and answer that question for you or address that, if she would. I believe Julie, are you available? And maybe I was wrong. I thought she was, I thought she was on. Um, perhaps our legal counsel then could shed some light on that.
But, you know, uh, uh, in order to save time, if no one has any other comment, I'd like to make, um, the motion and have it read into, um, the minutes to concur with the recommendation of the Executive Advisory Committee to appoint Gary Harris and Jill Lambert to serve as alternate, alternative members to the Romulus Board of Review with the same terms as the regular members beginning January first, twenty twenty-one and ending twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the approval of appointments of the Board of Review, as mentioned by Councilwoman Webb. End discussion. Here no discussion? Ms. Webb?
Excuse me, excuse me, if I interrupt.
Who is that?
This is Julie. I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry to catch you up. Uh, the term actually needs to start tomorrow so that it would cover the December Board of Review, which is conducted next week. So the term would commence December eighth, twenty twenty, and run through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Bring that back.
Do we have that?
Y- yes, this is, this is just so many last-minute changes and, okay, I withdraw that, I withdraw the original motion.
Okay.
If my colleague would withdraw her.
I withdraw, I support.
Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe, okay.
Now, through the chair.
Okay, Ms. Webb.
I concur with the recommendation of the Executive Advisory Committee to appoint Gary Harris and Jill Lambert to serve as alternate members to the Romulus Board of Review with the same terms as the regular members beginning December eighth, twenty-one and ending twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the approval of appointment of Board of Review with the corrections. End of discussions. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Oh.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
You, the last, um, item under the Clerk's Report, item six C. And this is a re- a study session request from the mayor's office. Um, this is for, it's a one-hour study request, um, for a for December the fourteenth, twenty twenty, at six o'clock P. M. Um, and this is to discuss the mid-year financial, uh, presentation. And the date and time, they both are available.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
We're a study session request from the mayor's office for December fourteenth, twenty twenty, at six o'clock for the mid-year financial presentation.
Support again.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for a study session request from mayor's office for twelve fourteen, twenty twenty, at six P. M. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
She have votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes the Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, you're most welcome. Number seven is the Treasurer's Report.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. First, I wanted to, um, congratulate Tanya as well. Um, job well done. Keep up the good work. And then I also want to say to Mr. Wadsworth, um, Councilman Wadsworth and his family, I'm glad you're, um, getting better, healthy and here with us today, and I'm glad your your family's doing well, but thank you for the information.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yes. And then finally, um, the winter tax bill was mailed out, and everyone should have received, uh, their invoice. If you did not receive your bill, or if you have any questions, as always, please call the Treasurer's Office at seven three four nine four two seven five eight zero.
I'll receive mine today, Stacy.
You have any questions, give us a call.
You're welcome. Okay.
And that is it under my report.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight is public comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those, uh, members of the public wishing to address city council. Uh, the raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. Also, um, you may, uh, submit a written comment, uh, by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of public comment. Um, again, if you've joined this meeting online, use the raise hand icon in the meeting app. And if you've, uh, dialed in, um, from a touchstone, touchtone phone, uh, press the star nine from your phone to raise your hand. Um, and then press star six from your phone to unmute yourself when acknowledged, and again, press six to mute yourself again. Uh, when acknowledged, um, we ask that you please state your name. Um, and also, you will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Um, when you reach one minute, um, left within that time, I will let you know that you have one minute to speak. And again, we ask that you please state your name. Um, if you've dialed in, we will acknowledge you by the last four digits, um, of the phone number. So, Mr. Chair, with that being said, we do have one, uh, raised hand so far that has requested to speak. And this is from, uh, Ross Jones.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones, please state your name.
Good evening, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is Ross Jones. I'm a reporter with Channel Seven. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as I did last time, I, I'm here because you blocked my phone number, so there is no other way for me to ask you a question uh, other than appearing at these meetings, so I'm I'm hopeful that, uh, you can turn on your camera and perhaps uh, we can speak. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, you had made two payments to your campaign fund totaling forty thousand dollars after we asked questions about a significant number of your expenses. Uh, why did you make those payments, sir? Mr. Mayor? Uh, your report also shows you hired an attorney who specializes in campaign finance compliance. Is that an acknowledgement that your campaign fund has been out of compliance?
If I, if I may, uh, interject, is it, uh, I don't know, is this concerning the council business or is is it state tonight, uh, Mr. Joe?
No, it's concerning the mayor.
May I interject?
Uh, uh, Ms. Abdo, would you weigh in, please?
Yes, this isn't city business. This is personal business between you and the mayor. That is his personal account. I am offended that you bring it before city council. You're you're more professional than that.
Right.
We offend you, but this is actually what reporters do, so.
I realize that, but sometimes reporters do some inappropriate things. At this time, I would think that.
Yeah, I would like.
Yeah, I'm I'm, with all respect, I'm not looking to argue with you. I'm here to ask questions. I don't know how much time I have left, but I'm gonna continue to use it. Mr. Mayor, have you personally benefited benefited from your campaign funds, sir? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, we have several hands raised, um, and several requests to speak. So if we can, once again, once we acknowledge you, um, any question, I'm gonna ask Council, just so be, just for the sake of time. And I know we like to add, um, answer, you know, if there's questions asked, but if we can kind of let, uh, the uh, resident or whoever's requesting to speak, let them get their three minutes in before you answer, um, their questions, if they have questions. Just because if we stop and go, it eats into the time, the three-minute time, okay?
It depends on what question they have.
No, I understand. What I'm asking, Councilwoman, is if you will allow the the person to at least use their three minutes to get everything out, and then afterwards, respond.
Okay.
Okay, just because we have several hands raised. Um, the next person, um, that we have, um, we have Bill Carroll. Okay, and Mr. Carroll, if you unmute yourself, and again, for the record, state your name. And after you've stated your name, your, um, the time will start for you. And again, everyone, once you reach that one-minute, um, threshold there, I will notify you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bill Carroll. I live in the Oak Brook subdivision. And we spoke earlier, the 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 police chief spoke earlier about the murder that took place on tap. That's right around the corner from my house. Right down the street from my house was a drive-by shooting about six weeks prior to that. Uh, a week prior to that, another street right next to that street, one block over Oak Brook. I'm sitting here with my wife watching TV, and all of a sudden I hear an assault rifle going off. Pow, 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 pow. So we quickly just turn out all the lights and turn off the TV, and I look out my window, and there's a gentleman standing on the corner with an assault rifle. Now, granted, I did call the police. The police did show up. The police filled my house full of light, arrested two guys in a vehicle, and then went down and raided the house down the street on. and then went down and raided the house down the street on Oakbrook, so I'm guessing that they did follow up on, or they did have reason to go down that area, which is the general direction that the gentleman took off walking. But on a daily occurrence, this place is like a, a racetrack out here. You have people doing fifty, sixty miles an hour up and down the road. Me and my neighbors have all spoken deeply about this, and we refuse to let our kids outside to play. I've got three boys that I can't let go outside and play because of all the problems that are going on around my house. Each one of my kids is within walking distance of every single one of those houses. Not to mention, I've got race cars zipping up and down the street all the time. What can we do, or what can be done to, to, to help us preserve our, our, our way of life here in this neighborhood? That is my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right. So, Ellen, I just wanted to say this to, to Mr. Carroll. He's already in touch with the police chief?
No, I have not, I have not spoken with the police chief for any, anything. I'm sure that there's going to be quite a few people up here in a few minutes speaking about Oakbrook, because there's, there's a lot of concerned citizens over here. And some of these people have lived here thirty, forty, fifty years, and this is the worst that they've ever seen it.
Well, I would just make a suggestion to the clerk to make sure that you put him in contact with the police chief, so his concerns can be addressed.
So noted, Councilman, and I know that Chief Fonness is on the line as well, so we definitely will make sure.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yeah, if I could to, Bill, you know, you're, your neighborhood used to be my neighborhood, and I can feel for what's going on, because I have a lot of friends still there, and I would hope that you would get together with the, with the chief of police, and let's, and let's take some, you know, let's take some action down there. Let's just don't talk about it. Let's take some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Is there any more comments from council? Okay, the next request to speak is from Gina Stewart. For the record, please state your name. Afterwards, your time will start.
All right, good afternoon, Gina Wilson Stewart. I just presented for the Telegram newspaper, and I just had a question for the attorney as well as Gary as it relates to the bid that the newspaper submitted, verifying that the information that they put in their bid was accurate and correct. And so I wanted to know, if the purpose of doing the bid, if you're going to look at it and verify it, is a part of the process. On page one of two for the official newspaper bid, one of the questions is the number of carriers, the number of newsstands, total weekly circulation within Romulus, and the associated news check, one for number of carriers, two for number of newsstands, and number of circulation is one thousand and ninety-six. Cost of the paper, seventy-five cent, and then a reporter will be assigned for ten hours a week. However, we now know that they were not delivering in the, in the city. They did not have a carrier. They did not have two newsstands because the paper is online. So, we signed in two different places that this information is correct. So, I don't think that is valid, because that information, he just proved that it's not correct, because they're not doing any of those because it's online. My next point is the cost of website printing. This is the print, the cost for printing at the regular cost for printing a paper, however, they're not printing a paper. If you don't know, but website ads are much less expensive than print ads, because you don't have to print a newspaper. So, the bid that he submitted for four hundred and twenty-two dollars for the longest pay ad, which was the minutes, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, but it's not being printed, that's not valid. So, if you need to double-check that information.
One minute.
And lastly, I just wanted to make sure that if the state legislator just had the same issue last week, and it did not pass, the legislators wanted to move to online printing for the notices in the state of Michigan, and it did not pass the legislature. It will come back in January to be addressed again. So, I know you said that the state said an act of God, but the state legislator just agreed not to go to online printing. So, now, Romulus, you're saying that you're going to do online printing, but it's in direct contradiction to what the state legislator just approved last week. So, I wanted you to be aware of what you guys just agreed to. It said that. I have one last sentence, Mr. Barton.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to verify that if we're going to do apples and apples, we need to make sure we're doing apples and apples. If you're saying that you're printing a paper and you have one rate, but you're not printing a paper and you're doing online, those rates will not be the same. And the very most important thing is that on page one or two of the bid, that information is not valid. I did note out in my sworn statement that for the last six months, my number of papers distributed was less, because I was being truthful to what I was actually doing. This was not truthful, because it says it's printing, and they're not. And I just wanted to go on the record to point out that I wanted you guys to know exactly this bit, this bid should be thrown out. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any comments from council? If not, we'll go to the next.
Through the chair, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Just what I stated before. You know what? It's, it's not right, it's not fair, it's not legal, none of that. No, Romulus is not even, you know, we don't even get a paper. We haven't received papers, even when there wasn't a pandemic. We weren't on the front page. Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Stewart, for coming forward. And like I said, I, you know, when you have to bring the bidders before us, something's not right. But my colleagues are going to have to sleep with their vote on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, 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 you know, really shaken by, because I didn't look at it that thorough as the Telegram news provider, just the information just provided, and I, I've said it plenty times to our, our, our city attorney. Sometime I just shake my head, you, this need to be looked into. You know, we, we shouldn't just, you know, shrug our shoulders, or because somebody wants us to vote a certain way. You know, that's what's wrong with politics. That's just what's wrong with politics. People are sick and tired of yes people. The people put us here to do the right thing, not be bobbleheads and say yes because somebody wants to say yes. And I'm telling you, not only a lot of things in the city need to be looked at, but we need to look at you real close, Steve, because a lot of things that you say don't make no sense. You accuse God of, of creating this virus? Are you serious? Really? Just to make your point, to get the rest of the council members to, to approve this, this contract with the associate news? This is shameful, totally shameful, and it won't be forgotten. You can believe that. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Okay, so we have another request. This is from Tony Heimberger. For the record, sir, please state your name, and afterwards, your time will start.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. You just did the vote for the assessors and the thing that needed to start as of tomorrow. We need to go back and double-check the tape, because unfortunately, and I'm sure it was just by accident, Eva, when she made the motion, said December eighth, twenty-twenty-one. It should have been twenty-twenty if they need to start here this next week, not twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Heimberger?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. We have another request to speak. Ricky J. For the record, please state your name. Your time will start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Ricky Jolyn. I live on Brant Street. I'm here with pretty much Barry, Bill Carroll there. I've lived here for maybe two or three years, and when I moved in, things were going great. You know, I would, I'd have maybe, I've, I've had tulips stolen out of my yard. I've had my snow shovel stolen, small stuff. It slowly progressed to pretty bad speeders. I mean, I live right on the corner. There's a stop sign right here. Nobody, and when I say this, I honestly mean this. I'm not exaggerating. Nobody stops at this stop sign. It's, it's, it's a red piece of metal. That means nothing. I can be sitting here inside my house, and I can hear through the walls a car flying through this stop sign doing what sounds to be sixty-plus at times. You can hear just boom, 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 right down the street. And I have called time and time again to the police, to where I'm pretty sure they know my name and number. I have, and when this all began, I requested to speak to the traffic sergeant, the chief, and I would leave voice messages and wouldn't get anything back. Eventually, I called the mayor's office, to which they referred me back to the police. And you know, that's just not working. We don't need to be referred to the police anymore. What we need is for the city to start doing something about this. I understand that it is the police's job, but the police are not doing what they need to be doing. And I know it's probably because they don't have the resources right now. We need to give them the resources that they need, because this is a serious problem. It, you know, it started with this traffic out here for me, and over the past couple of, of the past month here, we've got shootings, we've got people breaking into cars, somebody tried to break into my house. This is getting completely crazy over here. Somebody just hit a parked car over here and took off two nights ago, I think. This is absolutely asinine over here, and I told the police, last time I talked to them, that if they don't get a handle on the subdivision, we're going to lose it. We're going to completely lose it. I'm actually looking at houses right now, because I don't want to live here anymore. This is getting dangerous. I work at the airport. I love living here. I love the people that are good here. But this is getting really dangerous and just very no, absolutely not. It's not okay.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to let our resident, Ricky, Mr. Ricky, know that you should have protection. The residents just approved a milledge for the fire and police, so there shouldn't be an excuse where there's not protection from our police department over there. As again, I, I suggest the same thing to, for you, that you be put in, in touch with the police chief, that action can be taken, that you can get more police visible, have the police over there and, and, and cite that, you know, maybe this can tone some of that down, and some folks over there that feel that they can break the law can start being dealt with, because if you just keep ignoring it, it's not going to get any better. You're right. But I just wanted you to know that as a resident, you and Mr. Carroll, the residents passed a milledge, if it's maybe two years ago, for police and fire. So, it's, it's not nothing that we need to give them more. It's just they need to do what they said they was going to do with it. Thank you.
Can I reply to that? I'm sorry.
Okay.
May I?
I'll give you.
Yeah, he wants to.
Five with what? I'm sorry, what?
May I, may I just reply to what Ms. Williams said?
I want to weigh in, too.
Is that okay?
It's up to you, Mr. Chair, yes.
I'll go ahead. I'm going to let you go ahead, but I want you to make it quick, please.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
As far as getting in contact with the chief, I have spoken to all these people, and it's not, it's, it's not working. What, what we are being told every time that we are calling the police is that, oh, we only have two officers on patrol right now, or we don't have enough. We, we're spread too thin. That's what we're being told. I did speak to my neighbor next door, who knows all about that milledge, and he's under the assumption that we've opened up station two for the fire, and that's where this money is going. That none of this went towards the police at all. And based on, based on the fact that we don't have police coverage, I am inclined to believe that, honestly. Because when this car got hit out here, they were told that it was going to be a while before the police showed up. I'm the one that drove down there and seen the trail of coolant going down Brant, and I followed the trail. I'm the one that seen the car, because I was there, and I quickly, I, I'm the one that did that. That, that, that's, that's all. Thank you, city council.
Thank, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next request to speak is coming from Connie. Connie, if you will unmute and please state your first and last name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Connie Hodge Grayton, and I've lived in Oakbrook Sub for forty-two years, my family longer, and I want to talk about the situations that are going on on behalf of all of our parents that still live in Oakbrook Sub. Hey, the cops are doing everything they can. I've spoken to the officers, I've spoken to detectives. But what other resources can we give them or help them with, or ask for in order to control this? It's not just a couple of kids that are acting up. It's bigger than that. There are several rental houses in the subdivision that are being used for illegal purposes. Can we look at landlords that are renting to these homes that are being fire bonded and things? There has to be other avenues we can take, so that we don't have a mass exodus of residents, you know, that are law-abiding and been there for years and end up with even more rentals than we have now. That's it.
Thank you.
The next request we have from John L. Oakbrook. John, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and then state your full name for the record.
Oh, yes, my name is John Martin. I also live in the Oakbrook Sub. We've got a pretty, you know, we've got a really good group on Facebook, and we do a really good job looking out for each other here. But as Bill, as Ricky, as Connie has all said, there's not enough police presence over here. It, I've been here twelve years. The last year has seen an uptick that's beyond ridiculous and petty stuff going on. And then you start getting into the last couple of months and the major issues that are happening, and it's, you know, I mean, you might see the police through here once or twice a week, and that's it. And we're told they're increasing patrols, but we're not seeing them. When we call, it's, oh, we're backlog. We'll get there as soon as we can, and by the time they can get over here, what's going on is already done and gone. And so it really is getting to the point, you know, I mean, we've already made the decision in my household, when we retired, this was the house we bought twelve years ago to retire in. We're leaving, because I, I'm not willing to see what it's like in another ten years and be here old and by myself with my spouse and my kids, not here to help out, given the conditions now, because I can just imagine how much worse it's going to keep getting. So, we just, we really need the help of the police and the council to try to impress that they, you know, we, we know resources are stretched. We know that money is tight all over. But our sub is like out of control, and we just, we But our sub is like out of control and we just, we really need the extra attention and help that we can get.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have another request. Um, this is a call in. The last four digits are nine eight six two. Please um identify yourself for the record stating your name.
Hi, everybody. It's Bill Mogelberg.
Go ahead.
Um, this is in regards, I don't wanna bash the Romulus police. Uh, my family's been in this sub for, I'm in the Oakbrook Sub as well. And we've been in this sub for fifty-three years and the last six months I've seen the police more than anything. Um, I see a car every night. I don't wanna bash these guys. We got a thirty-six square mile city with four cars on. They're doing the best they can at night. But um I think our biggest problem in our sub, at least on this side of the city and this side of the airport, is we need to come together as residents and neighbors and start a uh some kind of block watch situation. Um, I don't wanna see people leaving, you know, especially if you've been here as long as you have and do a mass exodus. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, I've I've been seeing cars through here and these guys are working their tails off. I'll give them that. But I think as a resident and especially because of where I live and the situation we've had in the last, you know, seven days, we definitely need it because this affected me directly, what happened last Tuesday. Um, but I just want everybody to know I'm willing to start a neighborhood watch, but I just also want the city to know that the law enforcement is it's not the problem. It's it's we need to come together too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, that appears to be the last uh, that appears to be the last uh uh request to speak as far as from the public, and we do not have any um email request. However, um Mr. Wasworth wants to speak.
Mr. Wasworth, go ahead.
Uh, and Mayor Burcroft, these last four or five speakers have really brought something to the uh top of the totem pole here. And I would ask that whatever the PD intends to do or what they're gonna do, that we as council members get a written report on it and what's going on and what they're gonna do or what they can't do and uh because um this um, uh this subdivision was um my home for my first fifteen years in this town. And I know it's a lot of people that are there thirty, forty, and fifty years, and we don't wanna lose good residents like this. So Mayor, would you please keep us abreast of what they're trying to do, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll let council know. I believe the chief wanted to say a couple words under unfinished as well.
Okay.
And through the chair, Mr. Barton.
Yes, uh, Ms.
I just wanna concur with Mr. Wasworth and what he said. Thank you, Mr. Wasworth. I concur with everything he just said.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Tally.
Chair. John.
Yes, uh.
And I would just like to thank the last resident that spoke that that chose not to bash the police. Not saying that neither one of the residents bashed the police, but you know, we have good as, you know, as well as we have bad, and I just appreciate him saying that he see the cars. So the presence is there. They just need to be there just a little bit more. Uh, with this pandemic going on, a lot of people are on edge, so we, you know, even with our police department, we gotta do things different because we dealing with a different era. And so I I appreciate every last one of the residents coming forth and bringing it to council's attention and to the mayor's attention of what's going on in our city and uh where there is uh extremely help is needed. Thank you.
And I also like to say that uh, as the last resident said, we have to uh solve this problem together, you know, community and the police department working together. That's the only way we go solve this. Is uh working together and reporting back to council and so we could be on the same page and try to work this problem out. Thank you.
Okay, if there is no more comments under public comment, that takes us to number nine, unfinished business.
Unfinished business?
Okay, not number ten is new business.
New business?
All right, number eleven is communication.
Communication.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Wasworth, I'm glad you and your family are doing great. I'm glad to hear everything is, you're doing better. And we, I know my family was praying for you, so just as a heads up, I just want you to know that. And then on the, on the comment you made about everybody making masks, I just wanna piggyback on that. Um, at the last council meeting, um, I spoke about the distribution that the fire department done is doing with our churches, local churches here in Romulus. We did fourteen hundred like the, by the last council meeting. And then last week, we distributed seven hundred and fifty more uh masks to our uh our church, uh to our church community, to the ministerial alliance. Uh, Freedom Christian Worship Center located right in our downtown at thirty-six thousand seven twenty-four Goder. Um, they received two hundred and fifty masks for their church. Uh, Union Grove at sixty-three twelve Wayne Row um received two hundred and fifty masks for their church. We didn't deliver to their church. We delivered to their residents, but I wanna thank um sister, uh Pastor Sister Cole um for allowing us, um, the fire department to drop those off at their residence. And then um another church, um, that's part of our ministerial alliance, Transforming Churches, um Pastor and Sister Love, as they're well-known in our community, they received also two hundred and fifty masks as well. So um just trying to get everybody masked up. I wanna thank the uh fire department for their work in trying to get the uh with the, working with the churches, getting masks out to our different churches because it is important that we mask up. So thanks again for the fire department. I'm gonna do a special shout out to Brian O'Connor, who has been coordinating these efforts with our churches to get them these masks. And he also sends out the daily COVID report every day um that we receive in our emails. So just thanks for the uh fire department, all that you're doing. Brian, thank you for your great work. And then just our churches and again, again, thank you. Um, I'm glad that Mr. Uh Wasworth, your family, they're, you're doing much better. You look great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, well, I'm sorry, just a moment, Councilwoman. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh Mayor Burcroft has his hand up.
Okay.
I, we got past unfinished, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to get a chance if I could. There were a lot of to-dos noted, but uh Chief Finesse did wanna say a few things, uh particularly about, uh, you know, solves that we could work on in communication with council. Chief Finesse, are you there? Chief Finesse, you still with us?
Don't think so.
He was on the line. I apologize. Um.
He's, he's muted. He's muted.
Can you unmute, Chief?
There you go. Yep, I was hitting star six but not getting unmuted. Um, so yeah, I did wanna uh say a few things. Uh, number one, I wanna assure the residents that uh the Oakbrook Sub is at the top of our priority list. I um listened to uh the incidents you're talking about. I'm familiar with them. Um, we have actually made multiple arrests in there, which that's not always known. Um, but I would like to speak to all of you and I greatly appreciate uh Mr. Barton's comment that we can solve this problem together and also uh Mr. Mr. Mogelberg's uh words of support. So if um I can get your contact information, I would like to work on this together.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, for those um, those uh individuals who had comments during public comment, um, if you wouldn't mind emailing your contact information that I can uh forward on to our uh chief of police, um, please send your emails to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. Publiccomment@romulusgov.com with your contact information and I will be sure to forward it to our chief of police. Um, Mr. Chair, th- thank you. Next, we have uh Councilwoman Williams has requested to speak and then Councilwoman Roscoe.
Okay, yes, I would like to ask the mayor also to consider uh continuing on with the water shut off since this uh pandemic is a a continuation. Uh, I'm not for sure if uh the city have uh stopped, stopped that, but it definitely need to be considered. Is the mayor still there?
Yeah, we'll consider it.
And also, um you know, uh Councilwoman Tally mentions about the fire department, but since April, and I just had to say this because so many residents have have been blessed since April with masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers. So anyone that uh would like to continue to receive them or the, that know someone that do need masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers, please don't hesitate to contact us at seven three four six seven three eight three nine six. Also, I would like to ask the council tonight to approve a resolution for Judge Lisa Martin. Other communities, uh out of the five communities that she'll be uh serving, it uh did special things on her behalf. And so it, I think that's the least that we can do is uh present her uh a resolution for being our new judge.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Mr. Wasworth for resolution for elect Judge Lisa Martin. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. That motion is approved.
And also, uh Forgotten Harvest is still going on. Some folks, you know, are calling around and trying to figure out, are we still giving out food every Tuesday at the high school starting at twelve o'clock? And I would just like to say this to uh our chair and uh council person, uh Kathy Abdo. I I find it kinda strange when, when we choose to stop certain people from saying certain things. This is America and it's the freedom of speech. Whether we want to answer a question or not, that doesn't mean you rudely interrupt or disrespect someone that's asking a question or they're saying something that you don't wanna hear. Let them finish. I I think that was very rude. I I don't know, you know, what was going on at that time, but he had the floor. Let him speak. I mean, you know, whether the mayor answers or not, he still had three minutes. He can ask anything about the sun or the moon. If we don't have an answer, we just can't answer. But to interrupt him and tell him or suggesting him what he can and cannot ask, I I don't think that was fair. That's it.
Next, Mr. Chair, was uh Councilman Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I wanna thank the residents of Oakbrook subdivision for caring so much about where you live in your community and and not giving up over there. Uh, we are concerned about the neighborhood over there. And uh the chief has informed us about a few of the incidences over there, but of course, not everything. And uh I follow the Facebook page. Uh, there's a lot of support, a lot of good people on there, and everyone seems to have each other's back uh watching, looking, um, you know, a neighborhood watch sort of say um on social media. Um, hang in there. We're gonna work hard diligently to try to um, you know, clean up the neighborhood and get the riffraff out and make it a safer place for you to live. Uh, don't think that we take it lightly. We don't. Um, we're very concerned, just as concerned as you, even though we don't, we may not live, you know, down the street from you. But uh we are concerned for you, uh the safety of our residents. And we're gonna work hard at getting things cleaned up and making a safer place for you to live. But thank you again for coming out, spending your time tonight uh to bring your comments and your concerns to us. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Okay, is there any more communication from City Council?
One more from council.
Pardon?
Uh, Mr. Wasworth, I did not mention the Lions. I I kept my word. I said I would not mention the Lions tonight, Roscoe.
They play?
Uh, they won, but that's okay. Yeah, I I said I wasn't gonna mention it. Okay. I'm done.
Okay, if there's no more comments or no more communication, yes.
Yes, I I would like to say on the behalf of uh what uh Ms. Stewart uh brought to our attention, I really need to review that clear uh uh deeply because we we can't, we can't be voting based on how we feel. We have to vote on uh actual facts, and if something was presented, you know, whether it was to the city attorney and it was incorrect, whether it was to the mayor, we have to, we have to make sure we know what we're voting on. And so I I definitely uh will be looking through that and uh giving my opinion after I look through that thoroughly. Because if the one newspaper gave some information that was totally inaccurate, that's not fair. So I just wanted to make that clear that I will be sending a mail or something first thing tomorrow. Thank you.
If there's no further communication, uh, we need a motion to adjourn. Uh.
Support.
Who supported that?
I did, um.
Oh, okay, Ms. Webb.
We all did. Yes, we all did.
It's 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 motioned by Mr. Wasworth, uh, supported by Ms. Webb and company. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yep.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody.